I'm going to call this meeting of the York County Council to order. Would you please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance? Dear Lord, as we gather here tonight, we ask for your blessings and your wisdom and guidance. May we make decisions that are good for our county, our state, and our country. May you help heal the wounds of this country and bring us closer together. May you protect our law enforcement and our soldiers abroad. In all of these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Totally. I've gotten better after all those sessions. No, no, man. Not when I even close my eyes and everything. Oath of office for newly appointed boards and commission members. Would Reagan Craig, Arthur Beers, Mark Kramer, Margaret Parson Willens, and Deborah Dalen please step forward?
I'm going to administer the oath, giving the honor and privilege to administer the oath to our citizen servants who served on our boards and commission on behalf of York County. Thank you so much. I know some of you have served previously, and if you have not, welcome and thank you again. Typically, pre-coronavirus councils like to shake your hands, and they still do, and approach the diocese, and they'll give some words of congratulations if you move along. If you kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified for the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed, and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for serving.
There are no appearances under public forum. I want to remind you, you have two minutes. At about the two-minute mark, I will kind of count a little couple of more seconds, and then I will have to cut you off. So when you come up, please give us your name and address. William Jackson.
That's it? Mask off to talk?
You can, sir.
It doesn't sound like I'm in stereo then.
Makes it a lot easier to hear you, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Billy Jackson, 261 Bailey Avenue, Rock Hill, South Carolina. Good evening. My name is Billy Jackson. I've been a county employee and an attendant at the Eastview Recycle Center for over nine years. I'm here to register my disapproval about the way the county treated its attendants during the Corona pandemic. I'm sure all of our center attendants are still at high risk for catching the coronavirus with numerous pre-existing conditions, age, and weight issues. We were not given an opportunity to stay home during the shutdown or have shortened hours. We came to work. The county and the citizens needed us. It was our job. I assume we are essential employees. The trash and garbage had to be moved and put somewhere. We were it. We came to work every day during the shutdown, met face-to-face with hundreds, yes, hundreds of citizens every day. Traffic cones were set up in some centers, causing even more contact with frustrated and unhappy citizens. County figures said that we took in 140% more trash and garbage during this time, which caused even longer lines and more frustration. We were told to avoid contact with the citizens. You tried doing that under the conditions that we had to work. Don't forget, our disabled citizens, to whom we routinely gave hands-on assistance. In our job, we're required to be outside and in direct customer contact, not standing behind a plastic shield or sitting behind closed doors with limited citizen access or sent home with pay. All other county employees received a hazardous duty pay bonus. We are county employees. We are the front line. We did not even receive a thank you. Do I need to leave this somewhere?
Councilman, my name is Tom Parrish, 1215 Aragon Beach Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I have worked for the county for 11 years at Mount Gallant Household and Recycle Center. The county cut us down to one-lane traffic during the pandemic, which frustrated all customers. We have to enforce the load limits brought in, having no white goods such as washing machines, dryers, et cetera, no computers and TVs. Our wonderful supervisor placed a car counter across our driveway. In one week, seven working days, we took in over 7,800 cars and trucks. That equals to 133 cars and trucks per hour. We are on the front line, close distance to our customers without them wearing a mask. We are considered essential workers, not having the liberty of working from home or receiving a hazardous bonus check. Customers would get in our face, have verbal abuse, physical threats, and some would talk about our family tree. You have to realize that we are between the ages of 65 and 85, which is the prime age for the pandemic virus. So I will close, and I want to thank Councilmen Robert Winkler and Bump Roddy for their support for us. On July 20th, Mr. Winkler made a motion that all York County employees would receive a hazardous bonus check. Council approved this motion, five to two. So my question is for all of our 66 workers who did not receive a bonus. We want to know why, and why were we discriminated against? We would like an answer, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for everybody here has come about the Pleasant Road development, the triangle between Coffop and Pleasant Road, and we're the majority of the landowners that's right beside it, adjacent. You see the pictures that we've submitted showing the property line, how it connects to the triangle. We have probably seven to 10 acres and about four different plots on Pleasant Road, and this has been residential, as far as I know, and we want to keep it that way. Everyone thought that Coffop Road was a cutoff between residential on the left-hand side and business on the right-hand side, and this is what me and my wife is very concerned Please take a look at the pictures, and you'll see a picture of all our place. We keep it maintained to a T, and it's beautiful. And we just hate to see all the wildlife that comes in. We have to put up with runoffs from the development, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Reedah Kater, 1866 Pleasant Road, Fort Mill, South Carolina. Over the weekend, I sent each of the council members an email. I hope you read it. It gave some details of some of the reasons that I opposed this rezoning. As my husband just said, the potential contamination of the fish pond and also our private well that serves our house by the runoff from that site is a concern. I believe the county long-range plan for 2035 continues to show that piece of land as residential use. The transient nature of those who would be coming into a hotel doesn't feel like everybody else that lives around there who cares about all the aspects of the county and all the aspects of that particular neighborhood. And I was contacted after I had attended the information session that was offered by Solera Hospitality. I was contacted by a resident from the Habersham Development, which is, let's see, they're east of this property, we are north of the property, and then some of the other people here are east of this property. And he asked me, this was how shoot, he asked me if I would deliver a copy of a petition that he gathered over this weekend of residents there, 43 signatures, 41 lines, because sometimes it was signed by husband and wife together on the same line. And I understand that he also emailed a copy of this to your chairman. And these people also feel like they are not represented, because as he informed me, the so-called Home Owners Association consists only of a board of trustees, a board, who are employees of Four Star Realty out of the Atlanta office, and that the homeowners actually have not been allowed to operate the homeowner association yet, therefore they can't put up a united front as a homeowners association to state their opposition to this, but they are all opposed. Should I bring this up? Or you have seen it, I guess, with the other members?
You can give it to us, Brogdon.
Good evening. My name is Steve Spoon, and I live at 1841 Pleasant Road. Our property is across the street from where this rezoning hotel would back up to, and I have two points to make tonight. Number one, the existing hotel, Home Two Suites, that was built on the right side of Pleasant Road. There was supposed to be a tree buffer to help diffuse some of the light from the parking lot in the hotel. That tree buffer is a thinly disguised shower curtain. It does not do the job. Light streams across the street into homes on Pleasant Road, so I don't have any confidence in a tree buffer for the back of this property coming up. Number two, the upscale clientele that has been mentioned to us in personal conversations with the new owners obviously probably has to do with the Carolina Panthers. They are putting a lot of money into this county, and I'm glad for it. But the Panthers play eight regular season home games, half their schedule, and then two preseason games, half of the preseason games. So for eight to 10 weekends, this hotel may be filled up with upscale Panther-related clientele. But for the other 42 to 44 weeks of the year, it'll just be standard interstate traffic, and that is not what the neighbors and the people that live there, the citizens that live there, desire. So I would ask that you continue with the recommendations to deny their zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Pete Caskey, and I live at 1829 Pleasant Road in Fort Mill, just across the road from the zoning issue on Coffop Road, and I oppose it. We don't need the traffic. We don't need another hotel to light up my front yard. There's already enough of that, and we have an abundance of hotels. I just don't see how adding another is going to improve the expected clientele in this hotel. You get too many hotels, and you can look around, you go to Cherry Road in Rock Hill, look at the Ramadi Inn, you look at some of the things up on Carowinds and all that stuff. When you've got a cluster of them, it just seems to attract undesirable people. And we're a residential community. We're always zoned that way. A lot of people have lived there for a long time. I've been there for more than 40 years, and I know Billy has as well, and I don't see where it's of any benefit, and I am very opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Arthur Beers, are you still here? Beers, I thought you had left. I think you didn't mean to sign up.
Jonathan Murdock, I thought that was just a sign-in sheet. I didn't realize that that was a sign-in.
That is perfectly all right.
Good afternoon. My name is Silas Patel, and I was part of the development for the Home Two. And when we bought the land for Home Two, there was a Lidl coming next to us, and in front, there was already commercially approved property. So we got behind that, and it was all the commercial block, but we also was wanting to keep an eye on this triangle. And we were told by Habersham, or rather Four Star, the main person who was handling it, that this is part of Habersham, and it will not be developed as a commercial land, especially, we will never allow a hotel on this land. And of course, we do study before we go to the market, so competition coming or not, and that's why we moved up there. I mean, it probably don't get any weight here, but what was stolen by Habersham and by Four Star to us was misleading. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Consent agenda, other than I've been asked to remove item number 10 from consent, and we are going to move that to old business number two. Any other matters to move out of consent?
To approve as amended.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Public hearing. Council will hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to authorize the sale of 0.16 acres, more or less, of an abandoned right-of-way located in Fort Mill along US 21 Business in the proximity of the intersection of Old Nation Road and US Route 21 to entertain an existing offer to purchase the property in exchange for granting the county a portion of tax map number 726000006 by deed to allow for the widening of US 21 and tying into Garrison Farm Road as part of Pennies for Progress Project number 11149-004, US 21, South Carolina 51, to authorize the chairman to execute the property exchange agreement and deeds, provide for a public hearing to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who is against? Is there anyone here in favor? Motion to close public hearing. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, hearing none. There are motion for third reading. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Council will hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020, to increase tax revenues levied for the county due to updated value of a mill, and to increase building and codes and stamps sold revenue due to updated projections, to add funds for salary adjustments and training and travel, to change appropriation of unassigned general fund balance, to increase general fund transfer to debt reserve fund, to eliminate the annual two-mill transfer to debt reserve fund, and to provide for other fiscal matters relating to county government. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Motion to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Motion has the third reading. Move to approve third reading. Second. First and a second. Any discussion? Yes. Dr. Blackwell.
Kevin.
Yes, sir.
We got the benefit of that reassessment. I guess everybody got it. So it appears everybody I talked to is showing that they got the max 15% allowed. Any feedback on that?
I guess one thing I'd like to make clear, this budget amendment has nothing to do with the reassessment. Five years ago, August 23rd, y'all voted on the same thing that's going to be coming up shortly on the agenda. This has nothing to do with the budget amendment.
Well, not directly, but it's still part of the future budget.
Correct. And one thing York County is going to do this year, which y'all are going to vote on, management is recommending a three-mill rollback on our taxes. That is to keep us revenue-neutral on the reassessment. That is the responsibility of every government to roll there when the reassessment goes out and they've been given new value of their mills by the auditor, there to roll back their taxes to stay revenue-neutral. I cannot speak for the other governments in the county. If you have a governing body with elected officials, they have financial sovereignty on their budgets and their millage, and they have to stay within the law. I've got numerous calls today. I've informed a lot of people, y'all do not set the millage for the school district or the municipalities. What y'all control is our operating millage, and we are rolling that back three mills. That's something I'm very proud of. We're being very transparent. We're doing what we're supposed to do when a reassessment happens, but that is completely separate from the budget amendment.
Yeah, I get it, but I wanted to give you a hard time a little bit today anyway.
Yes, sir. That's fine.
But you're saying for the next budget, that's part of it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Old Business rezoning action, consider second reading case number 20-05, tax map number 653000015 to rezone from RD 2 to BD 3, 3.11 acres at 1835, Cold Tharp Road in Fort Mill.
Move to deny the request.
Second. Any discussion? This is in my district, and today I've received over 40 emails from people in my district saying they did not want this, neighbors along Cold Tharp Road and in Habersham. I want to say, in the next 10, 15 years, that area is going to look a lot more commercial. And I agree, Mr. Kater, that there has been a north-south, that that commercial would not pass that northern. It is coming. It is coming. It's going to come down from Gold Hill and start putting pressure on your area, and it's going to come from kind of the 160. That whole area is fundamentally going to change. I tend to listen to my constituents. If they come out in large enough numbers and they say they don't want it, I don't do it, regardless of how I see the future happening, because you live there. You're the neighbors. So that is why I will support this motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Back to consent number 10 on page four, which is now old business number two. Council to approve RFP 2693 regarding the professional services agreement with Garner Economics LLC ED Consulting Services Agreement for development of the Economic Development Strategic Plan and authorize the county manager to execute the PSA on behalf of the county. Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
Thank you. I'll just say a few things. This is something that's been in our budget, and we've talked about for at least a year, I believe, when we first started talking about this, and we were looking at different options for economic development, and some of the council members expressed that they really would like to see us update a strategic plan so that we could better focus our activities to try to draw in what we're hoping to be better jobs for our citizens and, you know, higher-wage jobs and that type of thing. And so at that time, we asked management to put a line item in our budget for that, to pay a portion of that. And we looked at different things, and what this will do, in my opinion, is we're going to look at several things. One is just our existing industry and maybe what we could be looking at to recruit to complement that existing industry. Many times, if we can get complementary manufacturers in an area like this, that makes, you know, part of our job is not just to recruit new, but to help keep what we've got. And if we can get complementary manufacturers here that supply each other or work in the same industry together, then that helps make them a little more sticky, as we call it in my business, that it makes more sense for them to stay here in York County when they have some of their suppliers here as well. So that's one of the things we can be looking at, is what complementary industries we can bring in or manufacturers with the industries we already have. And so, you know, a couple of things that I've heard it said, well, can our staff do this? Aren't they trained to do this? And I believe our staff could do most of this, but as county council members, and one of our main focuses is to, we talked about taxes and budget tonight, is to bring in employers for our citizens and to keep our tax base as proper as we can, you know, as balanced as we can, so that everything's not residential. We need to bring in more manufacturers. And so my question to everyone who questioned that, or my answer to that is, do we want our staff out speaking to new potential employers and to our existing employers about what we can do to help them grow their business and expand things? Or do we want our staff working on a study and crunching numbers and doing all that stuff and not talking to potential new employers that could be coming to town? Because they can't do both things. We only have a limited number of staff. So is our economic development staff, have we tasked them to go out and find new employers and keep our existing employers, or will we task them to be number crunchers and study things? And the last point I'll make is, this is up to $95,000 for this study, and our taxpayer budget part of this is $30,000. So my way of thinking, when you can get a $95,000 product for $30,000, that's a pretty good deal. We've got some of the partners that are willing to step up and pay the vast majority of this, and that's why I made the motion for it, and I will be supporting it 100%.
Obviously, everybody knows how big I am on economic development. I think we led the nation in two quarters when I was chairman on job growth. So I'm all about economic development. I'm 100% supportive of economic development, and I agree with everything Robert said. It's been part of the discussion for a year. It's part of the budget process. I get all that. But when I thought about it last night, reading over the agenda, I just couldn't bring myself to support it. And the reason I can't do that is because economic development's kind of a constant pulse. I mean, that's part of what the staff does all the time. They have the knowledge, they have their finger on the pulse more than anybody. To say we're going to bring in a consultant to advise them what best direction to go or what vision they have makes no sense to me, and that's why I understand and agree with the argument, if they're doing a study, then that takes them away from serving the people, but that's just it. They don't have to have a study. They can do their job. They can serve present industry, like they have the person that's the point person for that. They can promote, and I fought hard for the I-77 Alliance to give help to each county in that alliance, and I've seen how that's changed. A lot of the change happened when I was going through the heart surgery and... and all of a sudden that became more of a private body than a public body. And that would be my concern with York County. I don't want us to turn into Lancaster County and the problems they had. I just, you know, I just feel like trust the people that do the work, and if they feel the need for a consultant, I personally think that means we have problems. So that's just how I feel about it.
Mr. Roddy.
I want to go back and touch on a couple of things that, that Robert mentioned about retaining businesses that's already here. Economic development's been doing it since the existence of economic development. That's nothing new. And promoting York County for businesses to come here, that's nothing new. And trying to recruit them, that's nothing new for economic development. That's what they've been doing all this time. You know, and to pay a consultant to come tell a highly-paid professional what we need to be doing or he needs to be doing for York County, that definitely spells something may not be right, because we've led the nation periodically over the last several years, in and out. And to say that we need to pay someone almost a hundred thousand dollars to come in and tell us what type of business we need to be recruiting, because he can say we need to be going after this area, by the time we get there, that's changed. You know, nothing's a guarantee to say, well, you should be going after technology or textiles, because at the swift of a pen, things can change, this area can change, more interest can be in one area. So I, I think it's, it, it doesn't sit well with me to have to pay someone to come tell our staff where we need to be recruiting. That's what an economic developer is paid to do, to realize our strengths and our weaknesses and go out and recruit till our strengths. You know, and that's basically what a consultant can come in and make, you know, ninety-five thousand dollars to tell us, you know, we need to be recruiting over here. David Swinson shouldn't already know that. You know, if it was a, a one-time deal in which if this person's gonna have to come in and tell us what to do now in four or five years, we gotta pay again. Things, things are gonna change, and he needs to be able to adapt to the changing of York County or what's going on in our areas. I just think, and to say we're getting ninety-five thousand dollars' worth for only thirty-five thousand dollar investment, I think that's kind of, we, that money could be better spent somewhere else. That thirty-five thousand dollars can hire another employee for a whole year. But we're gonna pay someone ninety-five thousand to come in for a matter of, what, two, three months? You know, it's not the best use of taxpayers' dollars, in my opinion, so I won't be supporting it.
Scotts. I, I support a strategic plan. I think we need to be looking broad, broadly. I think we need to have a plan, I think we need to invest in a plan. I guess I do have a couple of questions, I'm glad David's here tonight. I am a, a little bit concerned. To me, it concerns me that two-thirds of the fee is gonna be paid for by the private entity that has potential interest in what development happens. And so, what's important to me, and I mean, if it were someone like a Beth Land who was sitting down, she just really, she did an awesome job with the last thing that we looked at. Feels like she knows our community, feels like she knows all of it. It, that would be a no-brainer. So I have no problem with, with doing what's right in terms of, of paying for a strategic plan. And I guess I want to make sure, and David, if you could answer a question and, and, and say, is this, is this company, Garner Economics LLC, is there any appearance of impropriety? Is there any connection at all that would suggest that this group is going to deliver a proposal that's going to be in any way tainted or that's not gonna have, that it's not gonna be basically all of this council making that decision? Because to me, it rests on our shoulders to decide where, what we're gonna do, and I just want to make sure all the councils involved in that, and that this is not something that folks who look at this think, oh, that's already done, they've hired somebody to tell them what they want, and, you know, meaning the group that you're with. And so I'd like to just hear you speak to that.
Yeah, no, the, the process is very deliberate and intentful, being inclusive and, and getting the feedback from stakeholders, from the county council level to some of our municipal partners, from the private sector and the citizens. So it's as comprehensive with no prescribed pre-notions of what a plan should be automatic out of the gate. Now, are there some key tenants of what we do in economic development that this plan will take a look at, or this process will take a look at? Sure, the blocking and tackling of business retention and recruiting and marketing, things like that, but focusing also on new areas of product development. What should we be doing to make sure our product is out there from real estate, but also quality-of-life things? So there's elements to this, as we wrote this RFP and these individuals in Garner in particular submitted plans, and, and there was nothing in there that says one group's gonna benefit over their, over another group in any way.
And there's no, no relationship that, that, I mean, is there any potential where a public might look at this and say, there's a conflict of interest? I have to, meaning you, do you have any sort of relationship with this group that would suggest that you're be able to dictate what the terms of this are?
No.
Do you have any information that the folks who are within Growth Partners, that they have a, a relationship that exists prior to this that would potentially look as if there's an appearance of impropriety here?
No.
Thank you.
Joel. David, while you're still up there, do you foresee the competitive environment for recruiting businesses and industry becoming more competitive or less competitive over the next ten years?
It's gonna be more competitive. Variety of reasons why we have to look at our competitiveness situation, these studies do this. One is workforce and the, and the costs and the needs of industry, and these, these studies look at that. The number one thing we get asked about is workforce, and what can this community and the citizens deliver for business? Because they hire our people, and we have the right people. Product is one of them, and we've talked about that in the past, about do we have the right kind of product, not only in real estate, but also quality-of-life things, and the right kind of community that can compete. The, the other thing is the business climate and the, the cost of doing business here and the taxation difference, and what do we need to do to offset that? From if it's incentives or grants and things like that, at the local or state level? So there's, there's a lot that can go into this study and evaluate and continue to be evaluated as we move past the study point. So there's benefit here that this whole study effort brings. And, and let me say this, we, we did this in two thousand and seven. We did it in twenty, twenty, we did the studies in two thousand and seven. We looked at our target industries in two thousand and twelve. We've updated those as we've gone through, and we work with our seventy-seven Alliance partners. But there's so much changing and things there that we need to always stay on the forefront and be looking at. And yes, we have internal resources and team members that help us with that, a research position that we filled this last year. But there are critical eyes and perspectives that this consultant will bring with their experience. But also know that in two thousand and fifteen, that was the last time we updated our study. Well, we're in two thousand and twenty now, and a whole lot has changed. We've got new office parks and new business parks. We've got new partners doing different things, if it's York Tech and Winthrop University and USC and Clemson. So how do you dial that all in and make it fit and work for York County? That's what this plan will help address.
So I get some stomach ache about bringing in consultants to put together a plan that's gonna end up on a shelf somewhere. What came of those previous studies?
Well, we, we implemented and worked on all the recommendations in the last study. If it was looking at our organizational structure, our budgeting, our target industries, amping up our marketing, and doing things in the social media realm, which we never were doing. Every bit of those recommendations, we did. The only one that is the one percent or less than one percent that didn't get done was related to entrepreneurial, small-business things, that startup area of economic development. And that was because Rock Hill was doing it. And that's a whole nother ballgame, and that was stressed in that study in twenty-seven, no, twenty-fifteen, that said, hey, this is kind of maybe a big lift for York County, but it's something you may want to put on your horizon as a stretch. And we, we figured it was better to support them, and we supported them with our staff time and some resources, but we didn't stand up a entrepreneurial incubator, that kind of thing. Because Rock Hill's been doing that, and it works there.
Mr. Roddy, I think you have a question.
Oh, yeah. And I'm not trying to beat anybody up on this, I just have a heartburn about the price tag that's, that's on the line. So did we pay a consultant in those three previous years, seven, twelve, and fifteen?
Yes, we put, we paid either a full bare amount or we, like in the, in the fifteen study, Chairman Blackwell was chair, I think at the time, Dr. Blackwell, and, and we piggybacked with the upstate, excuse me, seventy-seven, excuse me, seventy-seven Alliance. They were just starting at the time, so there was a study that was done there, and then we piggybacked on that for a discounted price. So it wasn't the full bear that you would see with a new plan, because the new plan addresses the new times, right? Whereas the old plan was a time just to update and kind of carry on and piggyback off of what was looked at deeper on a regional basis of the seventy-seven Alliance.
So is this, is this looking at the trend? This is something we're gonna have to delve back into with a consultant every four or five years, you would expect?
Yeah, I think, you know, first of all, once the plan is done, we, we monitor and report on the plan, and you guys are all a part of that process, so you're engaged. We want that engagement, we want that responsibility and the metrics that will come out of that plan. So you're gonna be intricately involved with it at, at some point in the future. Yeah, you want to make sure, if you've done everything, then you want to start with a new, new plan and new vision, and maybe adding new things or some, taking some things off of what gets done.
And, I'm sorry, Bump, are you done?
Bump, I'm done. Mr. Winkler.
Uh, just a question or a comment, and Mr. Hudson may be able to answer this as well, but we have to, by law, update our, if we want to call it a strategic plan, our long-range plan for the county every five years or so. That's a, that's a requirement, I believe. So it fits that this would be something that would be looked at as well. And for the exact reasons that Bump and Joel were saying, things change. You know, things have changed a lot in the last five years. And if you keep doing the, the same thing, you keep getting the same results, and we've had good results. I, nobody can argue with that. But we've also said up here that things are changing day-to-day, year-to-year, you know, the industries are changing, the, the way employers work, especially with, in a COVID pandemic, and what happens with that. You know, th- those are all things, I don't know about you, but I don't have a whole lot of expertise in, in remote working and doing that kind of thing. So, you know, that's something that this is probably gonna have to look at. Things have changed in the last five years. Yeah, in five, six, seven, ten years, something, we'll probably have to update another study somewhere along the way. But that's because things change. And I think that is, that is one of the big reasons we need to be doing this.
And I might stress too, if I can, the, the amount of the study at up to ninety-five thousand dollars is really for four people, it's not one individual and just that individual. There are four individuals on that consultant team that will come in, do the job as they've outlined in their scope of work, and, and carry us through to what I think will be a good plan.
Ms. Scotts.
Just to, just to make sure, because the, obviously, when the PPP came up, I was adamantly opposed to that, because I felt like it was pay-to-play, and I felt like that, that it was unreasonably stacked and decisions would be made without council having input. I just want your assurance that this is not a revisit of that PPP.
Correct, because the way we outlined the scope and the focus of this strategic plan was to first do all the necessary research and update, and where is this, where are we in the market? Where's York County today in a SWOT analysis? Then it's to say, what's the shared vision? How do you, as leaders in this community and others from the public and private sector partners that we have, what do we see as our vision and shared vision? The key there is a shared vision. Then it's looking at our product and workforce, and how are we doing to, to prepare and then implement and deliver as a community? And then the, the one key component we did put in there, because it, it addresses our partnerships that we have with the South Carolina I-77 Alliance and the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance, was a request that this consultant look at their efforts. How does that work with today's efforts in York County and our needs to support them, okay? And then also our organizational structure. But more importantly, are we best-in-class? If you just take us as a department, are we with the right funding? Are we with the right number of staff for the things that the vision and the plan is looking to implement based upon the stakeholder feedback? And then it's, the last part is the strategic implementation plan, which our, our intent is to look at metrics and reportable elements of the metrics and, and how we can go year-to-year, if quarter-to-quarter, whatever frequency, so we can say, yeah, we're on, we're on task, or, you know, we're gonna need some help, we're gonna need to roll our sleeves up and address these things.
And finally, just the last thing, it's, it's critical to me that every council member be giving a voice here, and, and I want to ensure that the process from the outset is going to make sure that it includes every council member, that it's not gonna be a, a three council members going out and making decisions that impact all of the rest of us. Is that, can you assure me of that?
The intent is to have a steering committee, because not everyone can make things as far as full meetings, and you have the requirements of, of notices, but have a steering committee of eleven to twelve people. And of the county council makeup would be the three members of the ED committee would be on that, along with three members of the York County Growth Partners, who are part of the funding stream group. And then three to four members of the Economic Development Board representatives that we've had set up here in York County, so.
So at what point, though, does it, do the rest of the four get to, get to see what's going on? Not, not at the end?
We can give updates, that's not a problem at all, as we go through the process. But more in particular, the intake sessions that we will have, either one-on-one or as a group, those will occur.
I, I'm gonna follow up, because I think what Chris is trying to say, the consultant is going to meet with all seven council members, correct?
Correct.
During that process, can there be, whether it is behind, you know, an executive session or, because some things we may not want being talked about, so that all seven can kind of be updated throughout the process?
Yeah, we can do those updates at whatever frequency needed.
With the assurance that every single council member is gonna have input, and, and the fact that you've gone on record now saying there's no conflict of interest, and this is not a repeat of PPP, I'm gonna support this.
I, I, you know, I'm gonna wrap this up. I, I just gotta vote my conscience, so that's the way it's gonna be. But the last few points you made is pretty much things I did every day in my small business, in terms of analyzing market staff, things like that. That being said, I've said enough.
We live in a, an interesting world. Back in March, no one would have thought that forty-two percent of all the gas revenue in the state would go down because there aren't enough cars driving on our roads. And now we are. I have a good friend who works for a Fortune five-hundred-and-fifty company. He is the head of their cybersecurity division. He has not been at work physically since March. They've told him he won't be back at work till June of two thousand and twenty-one, at the earliest. While this is all going on, they've been demoing and redoing their corporate offices, which held about five thousand people. And they're all getting the sense that they won't ever even have half of that come back into that building. I did a closing for someone in the last few weeks who had left Washington State and moved here. And I said, well, what brought you here? And they said, I just wanted to move here because we, we researched the parts of the country. We felt like this would be a good place to raise our kids. He goes, I still have a job in Washington State. I'm just not required anymore to show up for that job. I can do it from home and on a Zoom call. The world is changing, and often you need someone to help come in and help tell you where you want to be to help address those changes. And if, if we were all, you know, we, if we could all foresee the future and we knew what was happening, and we, and we could plan and strategize that, then we'd all be the CEOs of Fortune fifty companies, not, you know, not sitting here on the county council in York County tonight. And, and so I think having someone come in is a fantastic idea. And I thank our partners for assisting us, and I do want to stress, we need, we do need buy-in from all seven council members as this is going through so that there is openness and everybody knows what's happening.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. New Business, counsel to approve the recommended millage rates for the tax year two thousand and twenty, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
I'd just like to say for the people watching that, that, you know, we, we talked earlier in, in executive session, or in, in finance and operations and all, about the reassessments went out, and, you know, we've all gotten some calls of people thinking, oh, well, their tax bill went up. Well, no, the appraised value went up, and what we're doing is to keep people neutral, is now we're voting to roll back. Well, no, the appraised value went up and what we're doing is to keep people neutral, is now we're voting to roll back some taxes. And so that is what I believe councils should do as representatives of the citizens is make sure that when the value of property and millage goes up, that we don't just take that as a hidden tax increase and just keep taxing at the same millage rate. And people think, oh, well, you know, my taxes haven't gone, yeah, your taxes went up if the value of the mill goes up. We're rolling back your taxes tonight. And so that's something that doesn't get addressed enough and people don't realize with these things. So that's, I want to thank the rest of the council members, assuming that this passes here in just a second, um, for doing what we should be doing and doing what's right for our citizens.
Mr. Roddy.
I don't think you have to worry about this passing. I think it's going to pass with flying colors. Uh, but I just wanted to say, you know, I know our staff will probably be getting tons of calls when, when the bills go out and they probably already start to getting calls, like Kevin said earlier, about, you know, the, the increase in value. And we have, for several, several times I've been up here on council, we have rolled back the millage to, and if we're going to have a tax increase, we'll have a, uh, a vote for a tax increase. But in this case, we are voting to make sure that we stay cost neutral. But I wanted to say this to get it out there, make sure when you do get your tax bill, you look down it and make sure you know who's collecting what from you, because our staff feels a lot of phone calls of whether it's municipalities increasing their taxes or whoever else is increasing their taxes. But I know one thing about this group that I serve with, we have been real cognizant of the fact of keeping our portion of your tax bill low. And if we're going to, uh, do an increase, we'll vote for one. We'll go on record. We won't just slide one in under reassessment. So make sure you keep a close eye on your tax bill because some people may not be as transparent as we are. They may just capture that increase and go on. And then, um, you, you'd be left wondering, why did your, your bill go up? But it's not because of York County.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports, Finance Operations Committee.
Finance.
Finance and Operations Committee met today at five fifteen to consider applications for positions. Uh, and the record, we, we met and made these recommendations. For Building Board of Appeals, the recommendation was to allow Johnny Neelands for a first term in the Contractor Section. Jason Whitesell for a second term in the Heating and Air. Randy Crenshaw for a second term in the Alternate B Building Industry. And Carolyn Johnson for a first term in the Alternate A Building Industry. Board of Assessment Appeals, the recommendation is to approve Edward Lusak for a first term.
What district was that?
District four. There was no other applicants for that position. For the COG, the recommendation for PN Saxina for a second term. Uh, that is for, uh, the Minority Representative. Recommendation for Wes Burton for a second term for an at-large slot. York County Library Board, the recommendation of Wendy Michael for a second term for District One. We deferred Riverview Fire Tax Board consideration. CBB, we deferred the appointment for District Two, but we approved and, and recommended consideration of Chip Hutchison for a first term for District Seven. Catawba Mental Health Board, we recommended Thomas Muller for a second term, Karen Nichols for a second term, Alexandria Esposito Benias for a second term, Holly Rittker for a first term, Paul Cornley for a first term, and Georgette Fur for a first term. For the Lake Wiley Marine Commission, we recommended Quay Wiliford for a first term. We also received an update that, that you all did, and there's some information that I think, um, our treasurer's going to explain to us with new reporting, um, and how we get monthly reports now on, on our budgeting and.
Are there any council member new non-agenda comments? Without Ms. Love here, it may not even happen.
Well, she actually sent me a statement. I'm just, um, I, I guess I could have mentioned this in the, um, committee reports or other reports, but I'll just say it here. Um, we, we did meet with, the ad hoc committee met last week with Rock Hill. We got a little discussion going on with Tiff. Uh, Robert, myself and Joel was there and we got off to a pretty good start. I think we're going to, we'll make some pretty good headway. I think part of the discussion now is between the two legals. And we do still have a couple council-driven items to, to kind of drive. But I think we'll, we'll make some pretty good headway and I think, um, we'll, we'll get there eventually. And I think we're going to meet probably one more, at least one more time to kind of wrap it all up within the next week or two.
Any other comments? Karen, any citizen concerns? Mr. Winkler, you're up.
All right, I'm, we're going to executive session for receipt of legal advice and request for settlement authority for County Engineering Project Number one, six, two, four, five, track one, six, two. Receipt of legal advice condemnation, action or alternative contractual matter, potential Fort Mill Convenience Center site. And receipt of legal advice Board of Zoning Appeals decision and potential appeal for Clausen landfill.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Winkler. Yes. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, would you kindly add, apparently God admitted a request for legal advice update on the Morningstar litigation. Um, Mr. Martins is here to update council on that in executive session.
So, uh, I'll add to that, um, for legal advice on the Morningstar litigation.
Dr. Blackwell, you're still a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, we are in executive session. Council meeting back to order after executive session. Are there any motions?
Yes, sir. A motion to authorize settlement authority for County Engineering Project one, six, two, four, five, track one, six, two.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other motions?
Um, motion to authorize county management to negotiate acquisition of Fort Mill Convenience Center site as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Any other motions?
Uh, yes, sir. A motion to appeal Board of Zoning Appeals decision on the Clausen landfill and to approve, um, to authorize, excuse me, Brian Autry as outside legal counsel.
Clausen variance.
Oh, I was saying Clausen variance and to approve, um, Brian Autry as outside legal counsel.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. About a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.